Jared, am I up?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome all those that are watching tonight. And it is 7:00 PM on Monday, September 14th. This is a special meeting of the Mohammed... or actually, this is a budget hearing. And so at 7 o'clock, I'd like to call the budget meeting to order. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Giles?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Hendricks?
Here.
Schultz? I can see you, Kalina. Can't hear you.
You're moving your mouth. We're gonna assume that you're here.
Are you muted?
She's not muted, okay.
Okay, Larson?
Here.
Hennessy?
I am here.
McComb?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May you be seated. Are there any poet comments for the budget hearing?
No, not for the budget hearing.
All right.
I thought you were here.
But this time, we'll turn things over to Heather.
Good evening, morning, Dr. Paul. And as you know, we have had the budget on display for quite a while now. Things have continued to change as time has gone on, just new information. And I have provided everyone with kind of a breakdown of the work funds of why and why things are the way they are. We are now showing a deficit. And what I do is I'm planning to, if we have to, this is only if we have to, to do permanent loans in those funds if we need to by the end of the year. The good news is, is I don't put anything in the budget I don't know about. So we still have not heard confirmation on that $400,000 grant yet, but it's still pending. So that is not in the budget. It could offset some costs. I know Dr. Rummel and Jared have applied for a technology budget, about $200,000. That is not in the budget. So hopefully that we will get that and be able to disperse some costs. And then Dr. Rummel has also applied for PD grant. And then I have been, I am applying for a FEMA grant, which is basically to help pick up some of the, 75% of some of the costs from COVID that were not in, were not included in the CARES grant. And there were, although we don't have anything officially yet, there might be a second round of ESER money. So there are a lot of things out there that are still what-ifs, but I'm not gonna plan for them without having an approved grant in my hand. So, and why did things change since we last met? Transportation claim went down this year, just basically because the transportation claim is based off of a percentage of mileage. So all of the costs that you incur all year, it depends whether they go towards reimbursable, non-reimbursable, special ed. It goes by the percentage of mileage. The percentage of mileage went down for special ed and stayed constant for non-reimbursable. So then it basically moved some of the money into non-reimbursable. So we have our costs for tuition and room and board has gone up, but yet the first indicator that the special ed department has received is that the percentage of reimbursement has gone down. Now, this could change throughout the year, but again, I'm just going with what I know today. They have said in the past, sometimes as time goes on, they'll find out later that the percentage goes up. So our corporate replacement taxes have gone down. Our rate went up. We've had basically just, you know, one-time costs, we've taken out. We put in new one-time costs. We have tried to budget for any kind of COVID expenses. And hopefully we'll get some of those reimbursed. Does anybody have any questions or anything at this time of what I have tomorrow? I will be downloading the salaries as they were put in today. And then we had some Skyward issues, so, but I will look at them and I'll be making sure that my salaries that I currently have are in line with what's in the system and being paid. And at that time, you know, that would be the only changes that unless we get approval on the grants, I would think I'd make in the next year.
Okay, any questions for Heather?
Heather, remind me, do we have, there are September property taxes?
Yeah, we're about one month behind in getting them. I mean, they're still within the current year, so we've received all of last year's, but we're still about one month behind from what we got last year. So that's why it shows a little bit of a lag. We, so, yes, but, and one thing I did want to say, I did decrease the sales tax income, even though we've only seen about 6.5% decrease so far. I did decrease it all the way to 20%, and talking to some other CSPOs, just being as conservative as possible. And I also just wanted to show that with doing that, we always put away the money for the bonds the year before. So I've already put away the money to spend on the bonds for this next year. So we are, we will be fine for this next year with that. Not to mention the fact with all the permanent loans to cover any gaps, we still will be going into the next year before we get, next year's property taxes with 2.8 million in working cash. Thank you for answering my question. Thanks, sorry.
When does this need to be delivered to the state?
We have to, by the end of this month is what we have to do. That's why next, next week is when we would like to get it approved so that we can get it to the state in a timely manner and so that we're not on their bad list.
We want to stay off the bad list.
Yes, we want to stay off the bad list because we don't want to be non-compliant.
I appreciate that. That's our history of being compliant.
So is revenue essentially flat from the state?
Yes, from the state, it is flat. Some of the grant, that's something, you know, I noticed a few questions being asked. What would we call the evidence-based funding, which is the old state aid? That is flat for us this year. We are still in the, and that's one thing I'd like to note to people that, is that we are still considered very underfunded for our school district. As a matter of fact, landing, would have landed in tier one. So, and I contribute a lot of that is because our population has continued to grow. And so once it keeps growing, if the money has not caught up with it yet. So that's why, you know, and, you know, I mean, it's great to grow. It's just that the state's always a year behind in what, how they're calculating the funding. So, so yes, that is flat. The grants, like right now, the grants that Nicole has for, Dr. Rummel has for Title I, Title II, and Title IV are less than last year, but we will get a new allocation of money later on in the year, like things that were carried over or any money that, that wasn't claimed by other people. So that may go up through the year. So if you're comparing apples, you know, to apples, it's not really that way right now. Because if you're comparing last year's grant to this year's grant, it looks like we went, we went down. But it's just with the information we have right now. Because I really don't want to budget for more revenue than I know of. So yeah, so the, and the state, you know, as they always do, they'll tell you they're flat, but then like, for example, with the private tuition, you know, they decreased the percentage right now. So that's kind of what they do sometimes, is they allocate it differently throughout the different line items.
Always a surprise.
Always a surprise. Yes, that's a good way to put it.
Hey Heather, other than the $400,000 grant from the state on the field house, which I know what that one is, what are the dollars amounts on some of these other grants?
The technology one that Dr. Rummel and Jared have applied for is 206,000. And it is no longer competitive, so it looks like there's a really good chance we will get it. The FEMA grant is just whatever we claim 75% of their approved claimable expenses. So they would actually have to approve, you know. But what I've done is I'm putting together all the cleaning supplies to date that we bought for COVID. Because Steve has done a really good job of coating them for COVID. So all of those, and it's really basically two vendors. You know, some of the tents, you know, that we have had. And then, of course, all of the PPE that, and they have stated that they may not cover the PPE unless it's like for a healthcare provider or whatnot. So we'll see. I'm just gonna try. It doesn't work right. So, but, but she has all of that in there as well. So just try to get as much reimbursement as we can.
What kind of range are we talking about total?
Right now for the, for these cleaning supplies, I'm at about 65,000 total, which would be 75% of that. And that includes the Clorox 360 machines. And then, but then, you know, with the PPE and everything, I'd have to look. I don't think we're that high, probably about 10,000 maybe. And then the tents altogether were about 20 plus the installation. I will also credit it for as well. And then the PD grant that Dr. Rummel applied for, I believe, was $9,000.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Before that, you said something, $9,000?
Oh, the tents and the installation.
Okay.
Because we, they were commercial grade tents.
No, you said PD grants, something, $9,000. Was that what you said?
Oh, just PD grant that Dr. Rummel applied for is about $9,000.
Oh, that was true. I missed the word amount. Sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We're just, we're trying to get as much in as we possibly can. But, I mean, so this reflects none of that money.
Thanks for taking the time to, I'm done.
So in the education fund expenditures, if revenue is flat, what are the highlights or changes in that expend, in the total expenses?
In total expenses?
Yeah, clearly the dollars you just mentioned here on what it takes to prepare and continue with COVID.
Yes, we have, of course, we have the insurance increases, like, you know, we have every year, you know, about 3%. And then, you know, the revenue and the expenses both reflect like the CARES grant. So those, you know, that was what raised them a bit. And of course, like I said earlier, the tuition and room and board has increased. You know, we have more students in need of those items. So the expense went up, but the actual reimbursement percentage went down. So our corporate replacement taxes, that went down. We actually have a good number from the state, you know, of their estimates. So I made those, this budget reflect those numbers. It was a 17% decrease from last year. So again, just switching to the, you know, so that is reflected in here. And the grants are just based off of what has been allocated to us thus far.
Heather, the COVID grant, can we include any of the additional staffing we had to do because of COVID?
No, we did not at this point. Now, if we ever were to receive another ESER grant, we probably could. This grant, we only included stipends for the, the opening cast for some of the stipends, and then the technology. We, what we did though, though, which was a good thing, is we took costs we were already going to spend, and we moved it to that grant for a part of the technology. And then the other part of the technology was to make sure that A through two had devices as well.
What is the timeline for those expected to hear? Do you know, like, have they said?
I do not know. So I, you know, I, I have Mr. McComb gonna sign the agreement tonight for the FEMA. I'll send that, you know, back in. That, it wasn't waiting on that because we can go ahead and apply. It just has to be in there for them to pass. So, but just keep, I'm gonna put in claims now. Because you, you know, a lot of people are waiting until the end of it to put in claims, which is in October. I'm gonna put what I have now, and if I have to do another claim, I'll do another claim. Because I figure the earlier I put it in, the earlier I'll hear something back in order to get my cash flow faster.
Hey Heather?
Yes?
Um, can you say how our staffing numbers have changed this year compared to last year? Like how many we've, how many staff we've added? And then can you just mention what the budgeted expenses on salaries and, or any other staff expenses, how that has changed?
The staff expenses? We really, I mean, the main difference is people moving up. We had a larger, which is a good thing, a lot of people during COVID go back to school. And so they, you know, they took that time to do that. So we've had some people make some lane changes. I mean, the only staff that we've hired were the ones that were approved in
March?
March.
And then we added the three EOPs and another custodian.
And as I said, tomorrow, I'm planning on downloading salaries so that I can see where I'm at compared to what's in the system. I did budget for the new hires, but I budgeted, I would say pretty high in the, I mean, mid-range on the salary schedule. So, you know, I'm hoping that that will, you know, some people might come in with more expensive experience, but I'm thinking it's probably the other way around. We probably have some people with less experience. But I, I did not budget everybody at the beginning of salary. So everybody has been budgeted for tomorrow. I'm just gonna start checking for accuracy.
Do you have a, do you have a feel for what kind of a change in those expenses we have this year? Like, is it a 10% increase, a 5% increase?
Overall, I mean, overall, in the Ed Fund, we didn't, we only had a, let's see here, look at my sheet. We had a 7% increase overall. And that has to do, that's your salaries and your, your movement. But that includes the increases in room and board, the CARES grant. Basically, it includes, you know, the transfers and other benefits. So it includes other increases as well.
Most of the COVID stuff's in there, right?
Yes, almost, yes, is in there too. So that includes all increases for everything, and that's only 7% at this time. And I would say a big chunk of that is the, I mean, basically, I had to add $500,000 to the budget for, between tuition and room and board. So.
Wow.
So yeah, so no, I mean, oh, when I did, I went down the, the worksheet that I did manually because somebody asked me, you know, what the average grade was, and it literally came out to 2.8% when I just looked at the teachers. So.
And that's what it is.
Yeah, but even when I do the actual, because I, I just wanted to see, you know. So I came in pretty accurate to what was 20.
So 2.8 on, on salary increases, a whole 2% increase just for the $500,000 you just mentioned? There's 4.8 right there. What's up?
Yeah, and then we have a, we had a 3% increase in insurance that, you know, out to our carrier. So.
So Heather, is it right, okay, so we're looking at a million seven something out of balance, but a million three something of that is building stuff, which we are paying next year for stuff that was done this year. So really, we're out of balance by about 500,000. And you say most of that is coming from out of state tuition.
Yes, but that is a large chunk of it. And basically, if you look at, and you'll notice some of it too, I, you know, even though I did the loan for more, you know, we still have a balance of 197. So, you know, there's probably about 300,000 that's like a true deficit in operating funds. The site in construction is our sales tax money, which is where our bond money went into. So our bond money went straight into there. So that is covering our field house and our administration office, high school things. Health life safety, you'll see is another 230. That is our field house, air intake, dust collection, paint booth, roof, and floor at the high school. Our torque is 64,000, Lincoln Trail stairs, high school entry, Lincoln Trail entry. And the reason I'm saying that is because that money is there for certain reasons. Torque is there for safety. Health life safety, you can't even use unless you have the state approval. So we're using that money for what it's intended for and to get things done that we need to get done. But that does not affect any of our, any of our cash flow.
That just amounts to the 500,000 we're paying on tuition and room and board. About how many students is that that we're outsourcing?
I do not know. I have to ask that question. I can get back to you though.
I just curious.
Yeah.
So how many were the students we had to outsource this year? Okay. So Heather, the extra we got from the state for the tiered funding last year was how much? $400,000 or something?
Yes, it was around $400,000 because Mohammed popped back into tier one. And this, and then this year, we probably would have been in the same situation, but we did not get it. Yeah.
Right, so what, what I just detest about how the state manages these budgets is they've taken away, then the extra tier bumped for us, which, which maybe that was a half a million this year.
Yes.
And stuck us with an unfunded mandate and don't want to pay out-of-state tuition with another 500,000. So they used to be upfront and say, we're gonna underpay your normal monthlys. Now they're going through the back door in other ways. So we're short a million dollars because of us, because of two state decisions.
It probably would be a total of a million with, or half, half, $500,000 on the tuition. It was just that's how much it went up, but it's not being reimbursed completely.
Right, yeah, yeah, but we still, by law, the money was paid.
Yes, yes, and that's what they did in 2010 too. I mean, it was called a rekey. You know, that one, they stopped paying on mandated categoricals, you know. And basically put us about two behind every year and decreased the percentage that we get back in transportation. So just keep our fingers crossed that we are still getting that as well.
Okay. Good job on those grants.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Jared.
Any other questions for Heather? Any further discussion at all on the budget? There's no further business on the budget hearing. I'll take a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
So moved. Larson?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote on adjourning the budget hearing, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes? Yes?
Pete?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
The study session, or the budget hearing is adjourned.
I would hesitate to move ahead because we've had it 8 o'clock posted.
Yeah, I know.
We what?
We've had it posted. Go get some tea.
We've had it posted, right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we will stand adjourned for 30 minutes and start the study session at 8 o'clock.
Go get some tea. Go get some tea.
I, I.
Okay, let's check WebEx. Colleen, are you there?
I sure am.
Ken?
Yep, I'm here.
Nina?
I am also here.
Great. Jared is the live leader.
Yes, it is. Yes.
I'd like to call and order the study session of the Mahalo Sima Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM on Monday, September 14th. This time, I'd like everyone who is a guest and here present to sign in. And for everyone here in the room, just silence your cell phones. I'd like to remind visitors, in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board to read the visitor guidelines, which is on the table outside the door, completely attached public participation form, and get those to Dawn. And she's got some to me already. Public participation is allowed only to the public participation portion of the meeting. Other than that time, the board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Dawn, can we have roll call, please?
Giles?
Here.
Keith?
Here.
Hendricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Ennis C?
Here.
McCall?
Here. Roll stamps and pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Tonight, we're talking during the study session about an update on some COVID-related issues. And then we will have a closed session following that. Can we approve the agenda first, or?
Yeah, I made that an order, now.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So next, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented. So there's a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the agenda. Roll call, both, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Ennis C?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes. And at this time, are there any more public participation forms? That's a negative. So we do have some people that asked to speak tonight. We also received a lot of email. And we announced with this meeting, we are not going to read all the emails. But they have been made available to board members prior to the meeting. And they will continue to be made available to the board members. The board members can read them. I believe we have a last count, and there may be some stragglers, but we're 46 emails basically talking about COVID and the school reopening plan and thoughts on that. And then we have one from the Mahalo Sima Board of Football Association on 13 minutes. Correct? And those are all being made available to board members. You have, I think, four people speaking in person. And then I think there is some one on WebEx. So first, Nikki.
I'm just having fun going there. Can I take my mask off?
You may.
All right.
Remember to stay there five minutes. We'll give you a little warning at four.
I won't need five minutes. No, you don't have to. My name is Nikki Gallagher. I have three children in this school district. First and foremost, I'd like to say what perhaps everyone is avoiding saying, even though almost everyone is thinking it. Lighten our arms. There are three board members that are in attendance. You should be here, social distance and wearing your mask, or you should step down from the board. I've been announced for this evening. You should have your camera on for the entire meeting. Our teachers expect our students to do so, thus you should too. Be respectful and turn your cameras on. What is gaslighting? Gaslighting is a form of psychological manipulation which a person or a group sows seeds of doubt in a targeted individual or group, making them question their memory, perception, or judgment. Those who gaslight utilize denial, misdirection, contradiction, and misinformation. Sound familiar? It's exactly what our media does today. It's what I've witnessed as a tactic by the three board members who don't attend these meetings. It's textbook definition when Chris Raffney graded the four members of this board and Dr. Hall, whom are devoted enough to attend these meetings in person. Stop being gaslit. When people say they want their children to go back to school five days a week, it does not mean we don't want our children, our teachers, to be safe. When people say they want their children to go back to school five days a week, it does not mean we want all families to send their children back to school in person. They should still be provided the choice for remote learning. When people utilize facts to show our society needs to return to some sense of normalcy, it does not mean they want people to die from COVID. Stop gaslighting. As our elected Board of Education, it is your job to rise above the noise and make hard decisions with the utmost attention to our students. Not cherry-picked media outlets, not ragey community members, not to business interests you may have. Our students have a right to an education, a constitutional one. I can hear the other side saying, "I don't care about teachers." Not true. We need to shore up our COVID protocols, make sure our teachers are safe and have what they need, and get our kids to school in October. Stop being gaslit. We flattened the curve. Carla's 90% back to normal. Parents have returned to work. Our administrators and teachers and custodians and students have done an amazing job this first month of school. It's time for the next step. Get our children back to school five days a week in person. They need it. And it is their constitutional right. No gaslighting here. Thank you, Nikki.
Okay, Nikki, thank you. We'll let Dawn reset. And Jeff Fergs is up.
My name is Jeff Fergs, and I have two sons in the high school. Matthew is a senior, and Michael is a freshman. And I am here to tell you it is time to get our kids back in school full time, five days a week. This has gone on late and long, and it's getting ridiculous. My son Matthew is missing out on his senior year. He's probably going to graduate early because there's no use for him to be in school. My other son Michael spends his whole day in the basement learning. He is on his computer, but he is not socializing, and he is stuck in the basement. The virus that we're dealing with today is not the same as it was six months ago. That's my personal opinion. It is time to get our kids out of the house, back at school, and back with other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll let Dawn reset. Jody?
Hello. I'm Jody Eichmann, and I just want to start by saying and I let Dr. Paul know that I really want to say from the bottom of my heart thank you to all of the teachers, administration, everyone in all the buildings, an amazing job. Because it's been a huge success over these last couple of weeks, a few weeks. Our numbers are amazing. Like, I can't even. When the first couple of cases came out, there was no fear or worry in anybody because you were able to, everything was so well-contained. They're doing a super and amazing job. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for all of the extra hours and all of the hard work. I would also like to echo that I would love to see the three other board members here in person. Because if these masks are keeping us safe and social distancing is a safe thing, then I'm not sure why they wouldn't be here in person as well. I just am here because I too support sending the kids back to school five days a week. I have an eighth-grade daughter, and I have a sophomore son. My eighth-grade daughter is in softball, and so we have been enjoying going to her softball games since the end of, well, practice started at the beginning of August. We've been going, we, this is our last week of softball, actually. We have traveled to all different school districts. We have sat, we've been around tons of people. The girls have been, no one has contracted. Like, it's been fine. It's been a successful softball season, my side is in basketball and football. And I watch these kids come out of practices. I watch them come out of school. And I can't describe the numbness that you see in their eyes because my daughter, the minute she woke up today, she got on her computer and she started getting it out because she wanted to be able to get it all done right away. Like, these kids, it's changing our kids. It's changing how their brains are even wired. My kids, we don't even have video games at my house. And so now, they're sitting on a computer all day long. My son had to drop his honors class because you really need to talk to your honors teacher more than just through email. That's hard to explain. It's geometry. So it's more complex. You need somebody to stand over you and be able to help you out and explain how to do it. We are damaging our kids. Back to watching them come out. When they're playing their sports, when they're with their friends, they're alive and they love it. And they're able to be closer because they aren't in this hallway acting like they're ones of soldiers with falling arrows on the ground. This isn't the way kids are supposed to live. The numbers do not support keeping them at home all these days. I am not speaking for every parent. I just want to make that clear. Anybody listening, if you want to keep your child home, please keep them home. I am not saying you have to send your kid. I love my children. I homeschooled them until sixth grade. But I also know that they need to be back in school with their peers. These kids need each other. Like, I can't even tell you, these softball rooms, they're hugging each other with their mask on, but they just need to have that interaction. We are, and then I'm just going to say this and I oppose. The fear that we are putting into their brains, everywhere they walk, they're doing this, everywhere they go. And when I watched my five-year-old daughter the other day, she was doing something, and I said, "Oh, honey, let's do that." She goes, "I don't want to get my hands dirty." And she put her hands down on her shirt, and I thought, what are all of these children going to be like as adults? We have so many kids with OCD habits already and anxiety, fear. We've got to let them get back to life as normal. They have got to be with each other. They've got to be able to interact. We are robbing them of their childhood and of these carefree years. For what? The numbers, the headline on News Gazette said, "Champaign County, our numbers are down." The U of I, all of those campus students that had it, the numbers are down. We've done an amazing job keeping it contained. We had four outright, or four cases of it in the whole district all these weeks. That's amazing. It's not something to be afraid of. I don't know what it looks like, but I just know that our district can do it. And I just want to encourage you as the board to please. I am not saying everybody has to go back to school five days a week. The parents who want their kids there, please allow us to do that. We love our children, and we want them back in school so that they can be with their friends and that they can get the best education they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Good job, Cheryl.
And Katie?
Hi, my name is Katie Escher. And before I start, I just wanted to thank each of you for all the time that you have spent working on this in COVID. It's uncharted territory. And I just would encourage you and all the members of our community to just be thoughtful and kind to one another. And really come and look at these meetings and the things that we're discussing with an open heart in mind. Everybody in this room and listening and in our community have the kids' best interests at heart. And I think sometimes we make it hard on one another and I just ask that we all be thoughtful. I do think that it would be nice if all members of the board were here. I think when you're able to look at one another in the eye, you can be more honest and compassionate with one another when you're discussing some of these harder issues. So with that being said, my husband and I have been fortunate enough to have worked through this pandemic. With what we have learned since the start of the pandemic, we are absolutely in favor of giving students the choice of returning back to school five days a week. It appears that seventy-plus percent of our children are participating in in-person learning. And this appears to be the viewpoint of the majority of the taxpayers. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And Dawn, I understand we have somebody you would ask to speak on WebEx?
Dee Chapman.
Dee Chapman. Hi, Dee.
Hello. My name is...
You bet up to five minutes if you need it. We'll give you a four-minute warning and four minutes if you go that long.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dee Chapman. I have one daughter in the high school. And I'm asking the board tonight to consider that for the safety of students, teachers, staff, and our community, to please vote no for hybrid students to return to full time starting in October. According to the Public Health District Best Practices for School, the minimum level of safety requires spacing students at least six feet apart. If all hybrid students return to full time, six feet between students will not be maintained, putting students, teachers, and staff at higher risk. Additionally, before considering a return to full time, the board must address the following. One, since infected children are often asymptomatic and no COVID testing is currently required of those students, how will the district detect and prevent an outbreak? Two, will the district either require students to be tested bi-weekly at a community testing center or provide bi-weekly testing at the school similar to the UIUC model? Three, with colder weather approaching, buildings will be closed up and fewer activities will take place outside. Are all building filtration systems up to date and able to prevent the virus from circulating throughout the building? Transparency in your plans to address all safety considerations is necessary as an outbreak affects not only those infected, but increases risk to the entire community. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dee.
Dee, thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment time tonight. We'd like to thank everybody who spoke. At this point, we've got one item on the study session portion of the agenda, and that is a COVID updated discussion. Dr. Hall and good to see Nita here. And they're going to share some information with us and then we'll discuss some things a little bit.
Right, so we just wanted the focus tonight for this update just to be, to provide an update on how things are going. Going to start with kind of a wider view outside of our school district and focus down. If folks have not seen our COVID dashboard on our website, Nita is the one that keeps that up to date. It's, whenever we have changes in that data, it gets updated very, very quickly. But that's how that we're just showing what we're dealing with and what we're tracking on. So we're glad to have that out there. But Nita's going to start with sharing some data and then we're going to share some of our observations that we've had in terms of what we've learned about, we've been in school now for four weeks, had some, a couple of cases and a bunch of people quarantined. And also just want to talk about kind of what that looks like on our end and, and we'll go from there. So Nita, you're going to kick us off. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, good evening to all members of the board. In fact, I'll thank you. I'm going to share my screen here so that you all can see kind of what I'm looking at. And, maybe? Jared? Jared, okay. All right, yeah. Okay, so as Dr. Hall said, we're going to start with kind of a big picture view. This is not national enforcement. This is Champagne County. I had hoped that this would be updated. It says updated weekly. That's not quite the case. But as you can see, you know, comparatively Champagne's doing pretty well. If you look at some of the Champagne County, if you look at the metrics they use, they went less than fifty per hundred thousand. As you can see, that we have four hundred and seventy-nine cases per hundred thousand the week of the fifth of September. Part of that, of course, is in due to the U of I comeback. So we have a lot of students. And as someone mentioned, it's cool that they're doing testing two or three times a week for those students. So it seems as though now this week, things are going back in the right direction for, for our county. But I wanted to start with that and then we're going to start to bring it down. As we go next, then I will look at Champagne Public Health. They have done a really good job daily of updating us to let us know kind of what's happening within our county. And what's cool about this is that it shows us specifically where we are as Mohammed. It just disappeared. So here, as Mohammed, then, as we're looking here in Mohammed, it'll show you that we currently have, and this continues to go, we currently have had a hundred and twenty-five cases of COVID in Mohammed. Okay, so we currently have today, as of this morning, there were ten active cases. So that, that tells us what's happening in our town, not just in our county. So, and that, that's good to see. That's not bad, as, as y'all have talked about. And so then we go back to Mohammed and our dashboard. I will only take credit for part of this, but as you look at the graphs, this will show you kind of where we have been as a district. I do try to update this as I get new information and the attendances are updated weekly. So we currently, right now, have forty-three people in quarantine. That's people who have been exposed, people who are currently positive. We currently have three active cases that we're monitoring and taking care of. And you'll see each day as things are updated and at the end are the totals. So we've had a total of six cases within our district. This only counts people within our district, students or staff. And so we've had a total of sixty-two people exposed out of just those six cases. So that shows you a little bit about how it spreads. It goes pretty quickly for every one case. And I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And then our weekly attendance is another thing that I'm going to talk about here. I kind of want to go in order. So I'm going to go back and I'm going to talk about COVID first. As we, so far, we've had point one-seven percent of the people have been exposed, of the individuals in our, our total population. Of that, though, we also have one point six-five percent of those individuals have, the one, the point one-seven percent positive then related and translated to one point six-five percent of individuals being exposed. There's a one point four percent difference in that. An average of fifteen persons every time we've had a case, like our, several of our outbreaks, we've had three different ones that were pretty significant. And each time, we quarantined fifteen or sixteen people between students and staff. So I, I do want to acknowledge, as some of you have pointed out, I want to acknowledge the incredible efforts that our teaching staff have done, not only in trying to adhere to the IDPH and ISBC guidelines, but with the flexibility, because every time we have one of these cases, we immediately have to close a classroom. These teachers have taken literally their whole class and moved them to another room so that we can keep teaching, which is what has allowed us to stay open. We learned early on that if we couldn't quarantine, we would have had to close the whole classroom. Instead of, instead of quarantining just three or four kids or around a certain case, we would have had to close the whole classroom. We couldn't, if we couldn't take care of those mitigations. We've had, our custodial staff has done a phenomenal job of trying to respond to the situation. We let them know. They come in, they deep clean. We have to lock the room for twenty-four hours. They come in, they deep clean, and then we clean the whole building. So they, they've done just a phenomenal job. And they do what's required by CDC and Public Health. So these efforts, along with the outstanding leadership that we have of Dr. Hall and our administrators, has allowed us to implement the mitigation practices that help us to stay open. So it's not without a lot of effort that that has happened. So we continue, I talk to Public Health daily, sometimes multiple times a day. We're working very closely with them to do contact tracing, the quarantining and monitoring, the exposures and all of our cases within the district. Within all that, our attendance has stayed pretty safe. It's, it's pretty amazing that what our attendance has done. So I'll go on to the next graph. And as you can see, we're pretty consistently at about ninety-seven point three percent. We averaged ninety-seven point four-eight percent for the first four weeks of school of attendance, okay? The interesting thing is, I was curious, I figured somebody else would have the question, so I looked to see what last year, the same timeframe was. And our attendance rate then was ninety-five point four. So our attendance rate with, and that combines both remote and in-person. So kiddos are logging on, doing what they need to do to, to stay in attendance. So that's been a really cool thing. So the other thing that comes into play is school started. And even though we have not quite as many students in the building at one time, we have already seen some cases of influenza. We're starting to see strep throat. We're seeing all the normal things that come along with fall, which mirror COVID, of course. So, so we have a lot of those types of things as well. The cool thing, though, so anyway, so I would expect our attendance to perhaps start to drop a little, just because it's going to be fall, we're going to be inside. And where things are going to start to spread more easily. What I have found is that, that we have kids that may be staying home because they have a sore throat, but they're still logging in. Something that they couldn't do if they didn't have that option. They're able to still be in attendance even though they're at home because they, unless they're really sick. So in addition to that, our community's done an amazing job. In that, when we have a kid that doesn't feel well, they're calling us. They're keeping their kids home. They're doing the things that need to happen to help us stay open and stay safe. They're letting us know if someone in their family tested positive so that I can immediately begin to work on quarantining those people that I need to quarantine. I can talk to Public Health. And so continuing to do this, for all those community members listening, please don't stop. Continuing to do this is going to be vital as we head into the fall and winter months and in the flu season. And it has allowed us actually to get a jump on the mitigation measures. Because we have found that we actually are finding out and able to implement mitigation measures before Public Health even has the report to tell us. So we're, we're kind of a step ahead of the game, which has been really, really helpful. So we are working with them from the front end, instead of waiting two or three days later and having people exposed on the back end, which is going to result in more cases. Instead, right at the beginning, we're able to get people out and quarantine for the required amount of time before, before they're extra, before they're exposing other people. So those, those are just some of the, the real quick data metrics that we have in the first four weeks of school. And just as an aside, with everything starting to converge with COVID and flu and, and all the other things, we are, for our staff, we are offering to clinic again this year. So that'll be something that we're encouraging our staff to, to take, take part of. And hopefully, everybody will do that. So what have we learned? We're, we're four weeks in. We've done this three or four times. So what have we, what have we learned? Well, there are a few things. So we actually, there we go. As we start, we have learned that the, I don't know what this is. We have learned that the ability to identify close contacts at school is critical. If we hadn't been able to identify these kiddos and all the persons that were within six feet of the positive person, we would have had to close the entire building. As a matter of fact, we were told, if you can't identify who was close, your whole building's closed. So we, we, with video, with in-person interviews, by talking to teachers, teachers had seating charts. Because of all that, we were able to identify who were the exposed cases and, and we were able to keep, we were able to keep the building open, basically. So then, the next thing we learned, so, so that's one. We have to know who's around who. The second thing, distancing is critical. Anybody that was within that six feet is considered exposed, so they're out. So it doesn't matter. It's not an arguable point. The distancing is critical. So we have found that we, if you go in each building, we have half the number of kids. Because of that, we've been able to distance. We've been able to spread kids out at lunchtime. We've been able to put fewer kids at a table. Like, at Middletown, for example, you have the little tables. Instead of having to quarantine four or eight kids at a table, I have two kids at a table. So I can quarantine this child if this child turns positive. The same in classrooms. If it's six feet apart, these kids around here aren't affected when this child turns positive. Our teachers are able to stay a little bit further away because we're not all crammed into the classrooms together. So, and because of our videos on our buses, we've been able to identify very quickly, relatively quickly, I'd say it takes a few hours, but relatively quickly, we have been able to identify those people who are at highest risk and who would be considered exposed. So I'm going to let Dr. Hall talk about the next couple of things. Just some more comments about, about space. And again, the last time the board talked about this was prior to the time that we started school. So with four weeks under our belt and the opportunity to be in the buildings and actually observe what's going on. In particular, lunchtime, and we're only having lunchtimes at the junior high and high school. In particular, at the junior high, we don't have the space to keep kids physically distanced unless we start doing, eating lunch in the classrooms. And then, then we've got some issues with having personnel to supervise that. But then there's some other issues, again, in the junior high in particular, just because that's our building that is mostly, that is most strapped for space. There are other issues with keeping kids physically distanced if we were to add the other half of kids back in. When students are quarantined due to the close contact, parents get very little notice of those changes in plans. So typically, the phone call is, I'm sorry, your child can't come back to school starting tomorrow and you've got to keep them home for, for two weeks. That does create some issues, I would think, with childcare and other, other plans that go on. So if we return to in-person learning, fully in-person, we can expect and we will have a greater number of students who must quarantine. We're not going to stop having outbreaks. I think that that has been just part of the norm. They seem to come on Fridays. I kind of hold my breath on Fridays now. That's been the, the pattern so far. I don't know if there's any scientific reason for that, but it's been what's happened. So we're going to very likely increase the number of, of kids who need to learn remotely for different kinds, different chunks of time as we, as we move ahead. One thing that, can you go one more?
Yeah.
Nita, thank you. If the board should decide to return all students to school outside of those who are choosing off-campus or remote learning, and I think this is a good time to emphasize that we are not ending the option for remote off-campus learning. That, that is not going away. I've got some emails today that were very concerned about that. And so just to be clear, off-campus remote learning, fully remote, is not going away. So want to just make that clear. But if the board should elect to return all students to school, then we really must keep Mondays as a professional development and collaboration day and a fully remote day for all of our students. Our teachers need this valuable time to plan for the off-campus learning, for the coordination of synchronous learning, and at the elementary level, the coordination across grade levels between our remote teachers and our in-person teachers. Other school districts have chosen to outsource remote learning and we did not do that. Our teachers wanted to be the ones to teach our fully remote students. And because of that, there is more planning and professional development and collaboration that needs to take place. But I think quality of teaching is, in my opinion, this is my opinion, but I think it's much higher. And I would much rather have our teachers teaching that. But it's, it's important to...
But it's important to honor the time training that's needed to make that work.
And so, one of the things, one of the things that we have, along with all that, I just want to say, one of the things that we have learned is that our plan's working. So far, it's working. It's become increasingly clear that it's certainly not the preferred method of doing school. I get that, we all want our kids in school. But to keep our kids learning in-person as much as possible, we have to keep the course. We have to stay the course. We continue to see cases pop up. As you saw in the graphic I showed earlier, we've had 125 cases in Mohammed. It's not just four or five. We've been able to keep our district down so far, but even today, parents are popping up as positive. I'm getting more and more calls every day. So as people get out and about, as people are doing things, cases continue to pop up. We don't have an end in sight right now through the pandemic. I know that it seems different, but it's still there, and flu is coming. We're heading into the flu season. And I'll tell you, I strongly encourage the board to allow us to stay the course. Because right now, we're barely into it. And I know I've spoken with a lot of administrators, every time we do this mitigation effort, we feel like we're barely, we're barely hanging on. You know, it's just waiting for the next shoe to drop, if you will. There's certainly no guarantee that that, you know, could happen. There's certainly no guarantee that we're able to always be able to continue the way we have. Right now, we have been able to mitigate the circumstance fairly quickly. We've been able to identify, we've been able to call parents and work with public health to actually get those calls out to parents before public health even gets the calls out to them sometimes and let them know what's coming, so that they're not blindsided. We have athletic teams that we were able to watch hours of video and not have to, over the course of the summer, I've had athletes all summer testing positive. So we've been able to watch video in several places to make sure that we don't have to close down a whole team or that we don't have to stop the whole classroom, because we can see, okay, X was by Z was by Y. And to make sure that we can only quarantine those students that need to be quarantined. There's no guarantee that that will continue to work. I, you know, I wish that we had black and white and guarantees, we don't have that. But I feel that we're maintaining right now, I feel like we're maintaining. If we fill our classrooms and put all the kids back in all too quickly, I fear that we're just going to go backwards and then close everything down. And I think that's the opposite of what we want. We want to keep moving forward and not go backwards. So I would encourage us to think about that really carefully. Having been on this side of it now for four weeks, it's challenged, it's showned. But we're doing it, and I want to be able to keep doing it. I guess that's, that's my final thought.
So we've got this information here, and I encourage the board to take it into consideration. And I know you have an awful lot of, you have emails in our inboxes with all kinds of different viewpoints. And I really appreciate the comments tonight, thank you. And to our WebEx viewer who commented. And if any board members want to stop by any of the schools to see what business looks like during the school day, if you're available to do that, happy to show you kind of like what that looks like. Open it up for any questions or comments or...
Okay, board members, this is a study session, so I know we put some rules in effect for comments for business meetings, those don't necessarily apply tonight. You know, I'd ask everyone to be respectful and everyone have a chance to ask questions or make comments. But we have questions for Dr. Hall or for, you know?
Yes, wait, case I want to look at.
Nita, how many of those exposures turned positive? Out of the contacts, you know, we had, did any of those turn positive?
I had one confirmed, and then I had one that was, said that they were diagnosed as positive, that didn't have a confirmed test yet. They said that a physician diagnosed them and they sent me that information. So of that, that was, so two, if you count both of those. So one confirmed. Thankfully, they were already in quarantine, so it didn't affect additional individuals' activation and positive.
So the rest of our positive cases, we're assuming became positive because of contact, that was what?
Correct. Yeah, all three, yes.
So four of the six cases that are positive were completely unrelated to school.
Right, so we have two potentially linked, right?
Correct.
In the same classroom. So that would be defined as an outbreak, but the others would not, correct?
Right. What you have, yes, we had, and what we, what we learned was that we have one that came out of the same classroom. And because it was within the two weeks of when another case had happened, it was considered an outbreak. So thankfully, the one situation where we had a positive that turned because of the situation in the classroom, that whole classroom had already been quarantined. So it was kind of a self-contained classroom. So that became kind of a non-issue, thankfully, for us. Because it wasn't a situation where I had half the, half the classes quarantined and the other half wasn't. So I didn't have to go back and do retracing on all that. We knew exactly where that came from.
And what are the recommendations from Champaign County Health Department for contact isolation? Is it within six feet or greater than 15 minutes exposure? Or is there some, are they using something different?
The decision tree that just came out, it just changed. It's 15 minutes, but now it's cumulative 15 minutes over the course of a day.
Right.
So if, and that's what Champaign County Health is doing as well. So as soon as that came out from IDPH, we implemented that. So with our last circumstance, we use that same, we use that same factor. So 15 minutes within, accumulate over the course of a day.
Seven.
And six feet. Yeah, and six feet, yes. And six feet, we discovered early on, so many things we've learned. But what we discovered early on is that even if somebody had, because a lot of people, the masks are vitally important, but we discovered that if somebody is within six feet for an extended period of time, even if they have a mask on, they're still considered exposed. So that's, that's another thing that we learned early on, so.
Is that the same that the other county, other county counties are doing too? Either masked or unmasked, it's still six feet within that?
If they're, I don't know what other counties are doing. I've been kind of so busy with Champaign County that I haven't paid too much attention to other counties right now, but that, I certainly could look into that. But I do know that I, that that's what the IDPH and the ISBE guideline is. IDPH sent that out last week, and so I implemented that immediately. We'd been using the 15 minutes all along. And then ISBE sent it out again on Friday. So IDPH sent it out on Wednesday, I got that information. And then on Friday, it came out from ISBE as well. So I would hope that other counties are doing that, since it's kind of the state requirement.
I want some comments. Comments or questions? Going back to, this is a question, about, I want to use my time wisely. Didn't you say that when you looked at the data from last year, what our student enrollment was and our attendance was, to this year, it's virtually almost the same?
Yes, the, yes. We have 97.48 average attendance this year. And last year, with the same timeframe, it was 95.41.
I shouldn't have used the word virtual, should I?
And some of that is because our kids who are quarantined or even sick, but not too sick they can't sit for their computer, are able to synchronously run.
Yeah, that would be my hypothesis. Yeah, I mean, I can't tell you what they're all doing, but that's...
But still, that's good.
I'm just saying some points to be made that came out tonight are that there are the people out there that want to stay remote no matter what. And that is not our desire to change that, should we change the way we take our students moving forward. Of the 40-some email, I read 41 of them, I think there were 48. In my data, just so you know, 18 people of the 41 said they wanted in-person. These are from people that can be recorded on an email that everybody on this board got. One just said notify. 14 said they'd like it to stay the same way as it is with the A/B schedule in schools for the elementary and junior high. Nine said remote only. And then there were some things that we should think about, issues with remote, that kids feel left out, forgotten, health issues. I'd like to say that that is the same issues that we deal with with our students that are in school now, with the masks on and feeling isolated from their peer groups. And Jody Iceman said when she walks out, you know, they're like, wow, we're done for the day and we don't get that extra engagement. I am very concerned about their social emotional status. The suicide rates since March nationally have gone up 30%. And these kids, they, all they have time to do is sit around. And one of the speakers tonight said, in their basement, doing their work online. So we've isolated them with this outbreak. Some other quick points were that were made in these emails from people were, you know, to look at expert's advice, pay attention to their advice. Make some opportunities, if you can, to be more social within your lunch and your recess opportunities. I work in public education, I am very familiar with what some of the surrounding districts are doing. And I'm not speaking of Champaign or Havana, but the kids are allowed to go outside. We, you know, the kids look at a certain way at lunch, and they're taking their masks off. We also re-screen their temperature at lunchtime, and if their temperature doesn't make it, they're sent home and their group has gone home with them, so we're double checking. But, I mean, we got a rate that's looking really good because of some of the things we're doing. And we have no, you know, we've had a lot of kids away from school since March. You know, the outcomes of this, we don't know when they are, but we are preparing these kids for college and beyond. And people saying their kids are going to graduate early because they need to get out. However, they're going to just be isolated at a junior college or college too, because some people in the state don't want to move forward and they're fearful. And I respect that, I appreciate how Katie Esker said that. We need to respect that, everybody has an opinion and its value. So I just wanted to sum up what people had said, because I did take the time to do that when I came home.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so Dr. Hall, I think I, I think I understand what you're recommending, but can you just make sure you clarify, what is it you're recommending the board do with regard to reopening?
I'm in agreement with Mrs. Bachmann that we should stay the course with what we're doing. Having gone through, once a week now, a situation, either an outbreak or a case, I mean, I'm sitting right next to Nita, and usually the principal of the building, and we're, we have the public health department on the phone, so I know what questions they ask. And see the phone calls that get made to parents. And the reason for my recommendation is because we would have quarantined minimally twice as many kids and maybe more staff if we had everybody in the buildings from the start of school. So that's my recommendation. But I think ultimately, it is the board's decision on how we proceed ahead. We said we would review this and with a goal of having kids all back by October 1st. But I also have to say that the information provided tonight is a perspective of now having four weeks of school. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's what I, that's what I think you were, that's what I thought you were saying. I just didn't want to put words in your mouth, but, so thank you for sharing that. So there was a recent case with a high school student. I don't know if, this probably just got overlooked, but can you tell us what sport was impacted by that?
You know, I don't, I'm going to be honest, I don't know that that's really relevant. I mean, I don't, I would just not want to risk identifying. What I can tell you is that there have been a couple of different sports looked at, partially because of some club teams and that, so. And, you know, some of the kiddos are in more than one event, so they're in more than one athletic endeavor. So, yeah, that, I agree with Dr. Hall, I don't know that we need to go to that. The thing is, is that if, the more granular we get, then the more likely it is that kids are identified and that's, that's our goal to not do. We want to respect privacy and confidentiality in this situation. What I will say also, I would like to add, we haven't, we're just now getting past Labor Day. So we haven't gotten a full two weeks past Labor Day yet. So we're starting to see adults pop up positive. And I know a lot of people traveled over Labor Day, and typically, it takes two or three weeks before you start to see the fallout from that. So we might be a week or two premature in some of our evaluations. We're hoping not, we're hoping that our Friday parties of four or five hours of mitigation efforts are contained and we don't have more than that. But so far, we have found that it takes, the administration, the building principals, Dr. Hall and I, and it takes us upwards of about four hours every time we have a case like this to figure out exactly where we need to go from there.
So to that end, this is the first case we had at the high school, as far as I know. How many teachers ended up being quarantined because of exposure to the student?
At the high school?
Yeah.
None, none.
Oh, okay.
Because they're six, because they're six feet or greater away, right? And we went into every classroom to double check their seating charts, to see where the student sat and where the teacher was in relation to the student throughout the day. And we did that in every class at the high school. In addition to that, every classroom that the student had been in was closed for the day, and those classes were moved to a different classroom, so that deep cleaning could be done. So they moved about eight classes that day?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So at some point, we want kids back in the building more.
Right, absolutely.
What, and you're comfortable recommending that now? What are we looking for to make that recommendation?
I think...
What kinds of things? I mean, I realize it's hard to...
Question, it is a good, it's a great question, and one I think about a lot. I think one of my biggest hesitancies right now is the season that we're in. And getting through the fall and the winter with some of the science that we're hearing from Dr. Paochi and from some of the other things, the fall and winter with flu season and everything else all together at the same time has the potential to be not great. So I would like to see us, you know, if we can continue to maintain throughout the, throughout the next couple of months, through just this semester and head into the spring with, you know, obviously, I hope of a vaccine is coming whenever. I don't, I am not advocating that we need to wait until we have a vaccine to consider going back to school full-time. I'm not advocating that at all. But I don't know...
That's what it tells, right? When we have a vaccine, it's all good then, right?
If we have a vaccine, it's all good, yeah. If everybody gets it, that's the other thing. Who is available for?
Ah, I knew there was.
Yeah, there's a set. So, so I think that, I think that the winter months are what give me the greatest pause right now. Because we're headed into, you know, October, November, December are the winter months for the flu season. We have as many as 90 kids per building out because of flu each year. So we're also looking at the potential for COVID. So then if those kids are out for COVID, and I'm quarantining 30 kids instead of 15 for 14 days. And if a family member then turns positive, then you've got an additional, because you've got the family members quarantined, plus then you've got an additional 14 days from the end of that quarantine. So you're looking at potential of 24 days if we start losing staff numbers that we can't replace. So I think that we just have to be thoughtful and cautious about that, because that's a very real concern.
Can you explain that again twice in a 24-day...
If you, for example, if you turn positive, everybody who lives in your household is quarantined for 14 days from the end of your 10-day quarantine. If you're positive, you're quarantined for 10 days, okay? If you're just exposed, you're quarantined for 14 days. If your house, people in your household, however, and we saw this in one of our cases, in some of our cases, we saw that what happens is that at the end of that, near about two-thirds of the way through that 14 days after a family member had been positive, the 14-day quarantine after that, about two-thirds of the way, then another family member turned positive. So we've actually had that scenario happen, that we know that that second quarantine is vital because the incubation is two to 14 days. So if the virus sheds, you know, you're still contagious for that 10 days that you're quarantining because you're positive. So if the person... because you're positive. So if the person next to you picks it up on day seven or eight, then, you know, then they have to quarantine again. So, so it, it's not as simple as just it's always this and it's done in five days. I, I wish it were. Um, but we've had several cases that that, that that's when the case, and it's been proven to be true, that that's when people turn positive. So, and I've had a couple of community cases that have children at school that we are now monitoring and tracking because of that same situation. So we have children who are out for, for an extended length of time because they have a family member who turned positive.
But we've also had the opposite true too, where there's been family members positive and it's not transmitted to other family members.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. But we don't know which one, we don't know which ones that's going to be. Um, and, um, so public health and what IDPH says is that then they have to quarantine for an additional 14 days if they live in that household. Now, if you have a situation where you're lucky enough to have a place that the person is positive, they will live in the basement for 10 days, then you're, then you're only considered quarantined from them from the last day you saw them. So it's just a simple 14 days if, if they can be away from you. It's, it's the situations where that can't happen in smaller homes or with families that can't distance themselves or, or put somebody in the basement. Or in one case, I know they sent dad to a cabin in the south for 10 weeks so that they can make sure that, that the rest of them can come back to school.
The pad door bag and stuff.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it's unfortunate that we've, we've changed the expectation from flattening a curve to making sure we had enough room in our, our hospitals and our clinics to take care of COVID patients, which now we have a surplus of, of space. So now trying to stamp out the disease by limiting cases, which is impossible. It won't happen. So we've created an expectation that, or a hurdle that is impossible to clear for us to go back to full-time school. Um, and I'm not, it's not your fault. It's not, it's, it's our, it's our politicians' fault, number one, um, because they've allowed it to happen where other countries and that have found a way to get back to school and do it every day, but somehow here in the U.S. we just, we can't get past it.
Haven't done this one, haven't.
And now then the next hurdle is, well, we don't know if these asymptomatic cases or mildly symptomatic cases have some sort of long-term effect, which is absolutely ridiculous. There's zero scientific evidence for that. It's pure speculation. Like, right, again, more fear mongering for people. And we can say, well, we don't know. Well, sure, we don't know a lot of things, but we have no evidence that it does. And I'm, I'm just making a statement that, um, we're not thinking rationally anymore. We're not thinking scientifically. I get, we read through some of the emails, we're not using science. Well, many of these things aren't based on science. For example, fomite spread. There's really no evidence that, that the virus has spread through fomites. And yet we close down classrooms for 24 hours and clean for 24 hours when the, the risk of fomite transmission is again, nil, if any. Um, so I just, I, I just feel like there's hurdles that we cannot clear. And if we do manage, manage to clear them, then something else is raised that we can't do it. So I think the only way around this is that we give the decision-making back to the parents and we let our parents decide what is acceptable risk for their children to return to school. We give our teachers an opportunity to decide what's acceptable risk for them to take in returning to school. And then we have a cohort of people who are willing to accept some risk and come back to school every day. And then we have a cohort who does not. Um, and I think that that's the only way around it. I don't see any other way. I just, uh, you know, we're going to keep chasing our tail during this. There's going to be cases. There're going to be a lot more cases, um, as we go into the colder months. And, um, we're going to have to be able to accept some of that risk and, and stomach some of those cases because it's, closing ourselves in our homes is not an option. So my two cents.
I, what I, I don't necessarily disagree with some of that. I think that what I have found that I was a little surprised at as I interviewed a lot of the people is that there are actually many more symptomatic cases than what I expected among children and among young people.
I'm getting more hospitalized.
In, in our cases, thankfully, none have been hospitalized before. They have, they have this symptomatic, um, so, so they're not totally asymptomatic. There have been, um, one case of a parent who, you know, was about to be hospitalized and they were able to mitigate that. So, so that's true. And I, I, that's why Max's question was very difficult. I mean, at what point and what, what is our metric for going back? You asked that a couple of months ago. What is our metric for, for what we're doing? And I think, I, I think that's hard. I know, I know that more is to come. Um, I know that it is very challenging to keep up with some of that. I, um, I'm appreciative of the efforts, as I said, of the teachers, of the parents and, and our community. It's done a great job. As Dr. Hall said, this, this is going to come down to a board decision. I can, I can give you the data that I have. I can tell you what I've experienced. I, I can't, um, I can't make the decision for you. I.
For those of you that know more about the calendar than I do, how many weeks do we have this year on the calendar between Thanksgiving and Christmas? Between Thanksgiving and whatever, more specifically.
It's either three or four.
Yeah. I, I guess, I guess that was probably three or four. Is that a four-week run this year or a three-week run?
I think it's three. It's three.
Is it three? Three-week run this year?
Yes. November 30th is the Monday. That's what she did. The first week is December 9th. So, oh, gee, that is December 9th. Yeah, it's, oh, hey. Yes, three weeks, three weeks.
The only reason I mention that is if we took a run at daily school and the wheels fell off. I don't want to wreck everyone's holidays, but that's a natural break in there where we've got kids separated.
Okay, so I have a question, comment. I think I get one more time. Is that right to talk?
No, this is a second session.
So I, um, I just have grave concerns about being out of school with everybody, 3,000 kids since March. And we have some coming back. I'm still for people having a choice. If we have the staff to provide the remote learning, you know, that does provide them their free education that they inquire about. Um, if four, if five is too many, you've already said we're going to have Mondays be our, our PD day. However, that, that, does that include some remote planning time too with that, Dr. Hall? Dr. Romo? Okay, so they have that. There are several districts around here that are doing four days, that are five and a half hours with a half hour for lunch, and then they have a remote day. So they, they're doing four days. However, if you really look at the hours in the day, it's like a three-day week because you take an hour and a quarter off at the end of each day. So that's five hours. So that's a day gone. And then you have your remote day gone. But they're in school, they're out, they're in the community because again, we have learned, we do so much more than teaching math and science and reading. We feed them, we take care of them, we clothe them, we provide social and emotional support for them. And that's more, to me, it seems like a compromise. I'm just, I'm very concerned. And when you look at the behavior management component of kids, when you have an expectation for them, we've done good and now we're not going to change. And I feel like, why would we change? I think we should still have to sanitize and wear masks to school. I mean, if that's what it takes to get us to go, you know, then that's important, especially if we have these risk factors coming in of sickness. But again, I've had constituents point out, I work in the school and I just, that is a very important component to, I think, for the kids. From economic impacts of parents staying home and the stress of that is difficult. So that's where I am.
I know Lori mentioned, um, there are some area schools on the four-day with the remote day schedule, which is, if we increase, that's probably what we would have to do to make the work of our staff and be able to support all of our remote kids. Most of those districts frankly are smaller than we are. I think we are the largest district in this geographic area to be doing anything in person, which is what makes it really hard is everybody bigger than us is completely remote. Anybody that's doing four or five days is smaller than us and we're kind of in an uncharted middle area here. There's not a lot of places we can go for, um, for comparison purposes or just to support.
With the data typically on remote learning, and I'd like to point out that only 161 people have been tonight to talk about this out of 3,000 kids. It's, that's just concerning to me, is the data for remote learning starts, it's like your honeymoon. Everybody's in and they're doing it, and they're doing it, and then they fall off. So we're behind on instruction and there are many people in the world who are, I realize I have cousins in California that haven't been in school at all. But then you've got your honeymoon and it's over and you got more people. And to me, the learning goes down and then they stop, stop logging in. Now, that has been my experience working at a large district that went from a, not a Bahamas Seymour. But I think that tends to be a little bit of the norm, but that's my opinion.
Have we got any feedback or any info from schools and other parts of the state that are our size that are doing a high level like we are or that are back in person more than we are? What their experiences are better?
Um, I've talked to Morton and Dunlap and they're going more full-time than we are. And they, they, Morton in particular has had their share of, of kids in quarantine. So I, you know, it's going well for them. That's how they started.
That was certain.
Those are more similar sized, as you mentioned. I mean, there are smaller districts.
There are smaller districts that doesn't.
Have the best kids and they can keep them separated.
Doesn't give us really good compare with that.
Well, what's interesting is the southern hemisphere is in their winter months right now. Many of those countries are at their peak in COVID and in school. And they're finding that the influenza rates in the southern, southern hemisphere are much less than what they have been in past years. So the curious thing would be is, uh, is that, that number equal out is the number of absences that we have combined with COVID and influenza similar to what we had in the past years, knowing that the mitigation efforts and having a vaccine for influenza, which people may be more likely to get now that they're concerned, which they have been in the past, that will see many or a lot fewer, uh, influenza cases than the past.
Well, plus, I, I mean, plus hypothetically, the fact that we're washing our hands, hopefully washing our hands more, you know, maybe the masks or whatever may help with some of that transmission as well. Um, so I, that's yet to be seen. I, I don't know. We'll see. But I mean, we're encouraging definitely our staff to get flu shots. I would hope that, that more people would get a flu shot this year, just for that reason, nothing else. Just to help offset the, the advent of the two coming together.
Are we in conversation with our local clinics, Christie and Carl, um, knowing that there's going to be anybody who's had, uh, symptoms, be sent to their doctor to be seen? So there've been conversations with those clinics to find a way to help expedite visits for students who might otherwise have to be out if they have another explanation if you've got an ear infection or strep throat. You know, those kids, if they have an explanation for their symptoms, then there's not a reason to keep them out of school. So we can start limiting those people who are missing school, but they have to have access. And so I think those conversations need to be had with local healthcare here in town to find a way to provide a service to our community.
Right. And, and thankfully, what I can say is I have not personally had conversations with them yet, but we have been, um, just because I, because of our skywarp system, I'm able to put input data so that our health EOPs and the people in the offices know if this person has prone to allergies or migraines or things that would be offsetting circumstances that may also be a COVID symptom. So we're actually evaluating those as they come in rather than just automatically assuming every kid that comes in with, you know, and honestly, kind of to a point that you've made before, and I've said this all along, it's not going to be the kid that walks in with a fever that's your COVID guy. It's the guy skipping down the hall there that just has spread it to all the people. The kid with the fever probably has strep. And in fact, we've seen that a little bit. So, so right now, what happens if, if a kiddo comes in, especially at the younger ages where that happens all the time, they have runny noses and puffs and colds. Um, and, and so what we're encouraging the parents to call the doctor. So what's happening now is that a lot of times they're making those calls and then the physicians are directing them. So then they're making this decision about whether to send that family to get COVID tested or to come in for an ear infection or, and, and with, as with strep, what we've found is that if they go in too fast, it's negative. And then the culture comes back three days later positive because they didn't wait quite long enough. And we've found that a little bit of COVID as well, that somebody would test negative the first day and then on day five or six, um, after exposure is when they turn positive. So, um, so while I haven't had those conversations yet, um, we certainly have, have not had any issues so far with those contacts to be able to be made with the children's physicians. So thankfully, that's, that's been good. I think that they kind of ramped up knowing that that was coming as well. Um, because rather than just automatically send somebody for COVID testing, we're recommending that they call their doctor for direction. So that is happening on some level. And I certainly can have, I don't mind having those conversations here, here next week or so with, with the clinics as well. So I'm, I'm good with that.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments tonight on this? This was on tonight's agenda for discussion. It was on tonight's agenda for action. I would suspect that it will be on next Monday's agenda for action. I would suspect that based on tonight's discussion, um, certainly unless things were to dramatically change in the next week, I, I don't think going backwards to all remote would be an option that we would consider. Likewise, I think the staff needs a remote planning day. So I would think what we would do next Monday night would focus on either maintaining where we were at or going to a four-day with one remote day like some of the other districts are doing. That's probably the next step at some point, whether next, whether October is the right time to do that, whether we need to wait for some other signals. I guess board members need to think about that. Dr. Hall, if we could get any more information out of either Morton, Dunlap, or anyone else that's our size that would help us, that would be good. Uh, because when it comes to Champaign County, the only people doing more are much smaller than us. It's hard to get a lot of good information. Good for them, I think, if it's working for them. It's just, we can't get much data that helps us. Merle?
Kudos to really all the administration staff for, for the plan, but also the, the execution. I, I know that we sit here, we've got responsibilities for all the, the constituencies that we serve, certainly the, the kids, but, but also the, the staff, the, the parents, uh, the community itself. So I like the measured approach. I, I think the month in, we're looking at the data. It's like we can handle some of these things. Much of what we, I think, face, had to talk about here a few months ago, was really the management side of this. What must we learn to be able to handle this? And I, I really appreciate what we heard tonight about what that learning curve really was like. So I think some of the.
So I think some of the questions that would be good to have answered from Dunlap and Morton would be how they had to manage things. What were those like? Not just the statistics and the metrics, but what were the takeaways? What did they manage? You said it's four hours for every time something like this comes up, you know, how much time do they spend? And we could learn, we could pre-learn, I think, from that a little bit with talking to those two schools. I'm glad we've got the kids in class as much as we do. I don't know what the differences are between the older kids and the younger kids, how all that's going, but maybe we can learn from other schools some as well. We're not going to learn that low boy. But congratulations to anybody that has done as well as you did here in these four weeks.
Our staff has been amazing, and there's some really, really challenging days. I just want to echo your words of thanks to everybody, and appreciate the kind words from our audience members about our staff. They've been incredible.
Max, I have one more thing. I just want to make sure that we're all, as we're thinking about this over the next week, that there, we've got a balance here between potential negative consequences of COVID and multiple other potential negative consequences. It seems like those other negative consequences are just getting pushed aside as if they're not important or can be dealt with, but those could be just long-term as any of the potential consequences that we have from COVID. And I just don't, we have, that has to be part of the thought process going forward, that there is a balance. It's not just either, you know, it's not just COVID, it's all of those things taken into balance. And if you're willing to accept a lot of negative consequences on one end, but very little negative consequences on the other end, there's still going to be a lot of people suffering. And to say that those people aren't suffering is absolutely wrong.
Yeah, and I wouldn't argue that. I think that that's part of the challenge, because just what you're saying is, it's a mess. All the way around, it's a mess.
Okay, at this time, we need to go into closed session for a couple of reasons. And I apologize, I don't have my reasons.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
We're going to use five and six, I think, or at least five, which is purchase of lease of real property. And we're going to use number 11 because we can talk about litigation, want an action against or affecting, or on behalf of, if they're filing, filing, pending with a court or tribunal.
Could we add personnel to that list, please?
Why are we adding something else? I'm sorry, but I repeatedly think it's disrespectful to add something to the agenda. We know what the agenda is, we get that ahead of time. I don't understand how this continues to come up.
Lori, I think we should just be supportive of the request. Let's work together on this.
You know what, I am trying to work together. We're trying to have our meetings be managed and have a level of respect and put things out ahead of time. We've said this is like the 15th or one year and five-month mark of a board that changed in April. No surprises, let us know ahead of time, the agenda came out. Y'all call, y'all email, we all can communicate the same way. I just don't understand. It's very disrespectful, and it makes us look like poor leaders when we don't communicate our needs ahead of time.
Lori, I didn't believe that we had an agenda for the meeting, and I simply have one question that I want to ask that will probably take about less than one minute to answer, but in order to not violate the Open Meetings Act, I wanted to specify that I was going to ask a question about that. It's just a follow-up question from something that I heard in a meeting tonight. I didn't really think or know about until I heard it, and so I just was going to ask a question. And if you would prefer I not ask a question, I guess that's fine.
Is this something you can? Call Dr. Hall, I want to get an answer, or is it something the entire board needs to be involved with?
It's fine, we don't need to discuss it. I'm fine.
Is there a motion to go into closed session? So move, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hennessy?
No.
Schultz? Schultz?
Yes.
Keith? Giles?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
McCone?
Yes, we'll take a break for about five minutes to switch WebEx links, and we'll come back in about five minutes publicly. We are not anticipating any business, it's a illusion of the closed session. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we hope everybody has a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Nita.
Thanks, Nita.
Thanks, Nita.